Okay.
Can I bring my phone in here?
And I feel like I found it in something.
Sheila. Do you have the Zoom link? Can you send it to Lauren?
Yeah. Yep, and if you need it sorted out and just turn on the computer, I can do that.
Well, Lauren has three.
Oh, I'll use it back too and see what I can find.
Just send the Zoom link to, yeah.
It's on my phone and it's, my email's not updating. Thank you.
But the reason we were, I think, is thinking of you is so we could put it in front of the.
Right. But if I just do a vote. Do. All right, I have seven o'clock. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, we'll do roll call up here at the table and we do have Rosa Covazos list, or joining us via Zoom.
Sarah Darty.
Kristy Van Meter.
Lauren Teis Miller.
Sheila Mengers.
Erica Price.
Sarah Sanders.
Rocky Booznitz.
Christina Plamming.
All right, Rosa.
Rosa Covazos.
All right. All right, we will call this meeting to order. We already did that. We did roll call. I need a motion to approve the agenda. Motion by Christina, second by Sarah. All in favor? Seven zero. All right, we'll move on to approval of the minutes of the October sixth, twenty twenty five meeting. Need a motion? Motion by Sarah, second by Erica. All in favor? Seven zero. We'll move on to communications. Middle School Site Council report, Mr. Yurk.
Good evening, board members. My pleasure to give you my twelve site council report. I'm excited to do it each year. This slide shows a breakdown of our.
Middle school. It's green now. Is that good? By number of teachers and population. Five hundred and forty-eight students this year. And it feels full. So the middle school has a few goals that are easy to measure through parent participation at conferences and data that I can pull from our FastBridge assessments and out of Power School. They are ninety percent engagement at parent-teacher conferences, that seventy percent of students will be at the fortieth percentile or higher in math and reading, and we want to reduce chronic absenteeism from its present level down to pre-pandemic levels. The building also has four goals that are aligned with the work that we need to do and based on our KISA goals. There are for clarity, teacher clarity, how teachers communicate learning intentions and success criteria to students, our three signature practices, which are welcoming, inclusive activities, engaging, and effective instructional strategies, and optimistic closure or solidifying learning toward the end of the lesson, the adoption and integration of high-quality instructional materials in our core courses that have those, and then strengthening formative assessment. So that is the assessment that teachers do at check-in points before the end of a quarter or a unit. So I'll give you some information about these goals in the coming slides. This is just a summary. I call it a health status. We want the middle school to be a safe and comfortable place to work and learn for both students and teachers so we can track behavior referrals and the percentage of kids who are getting referrals so we know who they are and provide interventions and supports. Hundred and seventy-seven referrals, seventy-six unique students, and ten percent of students account for ninety percent of the referrals. I like to keep track of that statistic. You want that to be a narrow group of students who you are working with, you identify, and you layer on behavior supports. What you don't want is thirty percent of the students to be inclusive of ninety percent of the referrals. Chronic absenteeism, forty-two students when I pulled this data. That's seven point two percent of the population, which is improved. Last year, we finished at thirteen point nine percent, and I'll remind the board that you are chronically absent from school if at when you measure, you have missed ten percent or more of the school year. And then students came in this year, sixty-eight percent were at the fortieth percentile or higher in math, and sixty-six percent were at the fortieth percentile or higher in reading. Those are their fall FastBridge scores. And we want throughout the year for seventy percent or more of the students to score at that fortieth percentile or higher as measured on FastBridge. We're doing well. If you look at the column on the left, you'll see through the years that students are coming more and more prepared to learn and leaving the school more prepared to learn. Twenty-two, twenty-three, sixty percent of the students were at the fortieth percentile or higher, and then this year it was sixty-six. So our elementary teachers are doing a very nice job. And then sixty-eight, sixty-three to sixty-eight in math. So excellent progress in both math and reading. I'm so proud of the teachers, students, and our families. I just, some more data. Seventy-four point nine one nine percent of students scored at the fortieth percentile higher last year in math and seventy-one point five in reading, which is outstanding. We keep track of discipline throughout the years. The blue bar at the bottom is the total count of behavior referrals from August through May. The green bar is the percentage of OSS. I like to keep track of that and monitor it. The nominal acceptable rate is about five point five percent. So kids do behaviors from time to time that require an out-of-school suspension, and it's always a regrettable and unfortunate consequence. We like to make sure that we do other things, other types of consequences, and provide a layered support so that doesn't happen. The rate of ISS is predictably lower during the first quarter at twelve point nine percent, but it tends to creep up into the low twenties throughout the year after we've conducted a lot of warnings and parent calls and conferences, and we kind of work up through structured discipline process, and kids end up serving a day of ISS. The school is well-controlled at the moment. These kids don't distinguish themselves in any way behaviorally. The only thing that I would note is they came in more ready to learn than typical, and they did well on their FastBridge in the fall. We're excited. This chart shows chronic absenteeism over the last few years. I just picked a few years before the pandemic so that the board could see the effect of the pandemic and how we're trying to recover. Seven point two percent year-to-date. It's important for students and parents to understand the positive impact of being at school. Staying home and catching up your, on your homework is not the same as being a remote worker. Missing school is missing an opportunity, and even if you get your math homework done, that does not necessarily seem to translate into growth on the FastBridge assessment or academic performance. If you just look at this chart, it will show you that the more you come to school, the better you do. The bottom horizontal axis are rates of attendance. So kids who come to school all the time tend to do very well at Shawnee Heights Middle School. The, the saying I have is it is the best intervention I can provide, regular attendance. We're, all the books about chronic absenteeism say that you have to communicate with parents about the effect of absences and then make them aware of their child's data. Everybody's busy. And we modified the middle school grade card this year as a result of some new plugins and reports that Katie Davis, our Power School administrator, is able to add. Now, I could put on the top of everybody's grade card a short little paragraph about the importance of coming to school and about the types of absences that are reflected in the chart below. And so this chart shows the days absent, the days present, times tardy, days enrolled, and then gives the percent absent and the percent present. So this student has excellent attendance. It's just a one way to show parents a snapshot. So we know that the school has a responsibility when it comes to creating a safe and enjoyable environment at Shawnee Heights. So I give the teachers professional development training. We consume research articles, and we have workshops on building connections. So we know that when kids feel connected to their teachers, to their school, when they have strong, healthy relationships with staff members and their friends, they're more likely to come to school and less likely to skip. We want kids to feel valued for their individuality and uniqueness they bring here. We want them to have positive connections with one or two staff members. I thought I'd talk to you just a little bit about state since we're talking about attendance and achievement. State is students taking actions towards excellence, and it is a quarterly incentive program that we have. So we take the kids on trips or we do things around the school to celebrate excellence. For the first time ever, a higher percentage of the eighth grade class qualified for state than the seventh grade class, which is interesting. Students can't have any Ds or Fs. They can't have any more than five tardies, and they can't have any more than two discipline points or two minor referrals to qualify. And that's Mrs. Mengers enjoying a cup of Kona Ice, or at least posing for a picture last year. State is expensive, and I put this slide up here because I saw a couple of social media posts about how there's always fundraisers and everything. You know, September and October are time for fundraisers. I used to be able to run the state program for six thousand dollars. But you just can't do that anymore when a bag of Halloween candy is twenty-seven ninety-five. So you, I could take kids in two thousand and fourteen roller skating for a dollar, and now it's six and a half dollars. So everything is expensive. So we have to engage the kids, the parents, and do a fundraiser. We did almost twelve thousand dollars this year in the fundraiser. The PTO is very generous. Some parents donated, and then that makes it so I can take kids places and pay for kids who can't afford it and only charge a minimal fee to those who can. I wanted to give you some feedback on the honor code. You might remember that I talked to the board about that a few months ago. The ELA teachers rolled out the honor code. They gave the kids a lesson on it. They worked through the document, and then they sent it home to parents. And it was essentially a series of positive statements about how we cannot offload our thinking to other people, to the internet or to AI. So for many years prior to coming to the middle school, starting in the middle and upper grades in elementary school, the students receive lessons on academic integrity and about plagiarism and about appropriately citing their sources. So almost every single kid in the school took that paper home, got a parent's signature. My hope is that they had a kitchen table conversation about it and brought it back, and I think that it's effective so far. It seems like fewer students are receiving behavior referrals for plagiarism and academic dishonesty, but the temptation to offload your thinking to AI is always there for a young person. Strengthening formative assessment is one of the building's goals, and what I offer here to the board is just a screenshot of the tool that I'm using to collect evidence for perhaps the, our partner schools who review our KISA progress. And all this is, is a screenshot of a spreadsheet that shows in, in our core subject areas that are taught by multiple teachers. The teachers are giving common formative assessments and providing some evidence that data was present. They were analyzing the data and made instructional decisions based on the results. So that is happening. I'm going to collect a common formative assessment, one or two each quarter throughout the year, and I see that that work is reflected here and also the notes that the teachers send out to the school. And then lastly, I know that the board has approved high-quality instructional materials in ELA in math, and you received detailed presentations from Mrs. Bell and Mrs. Hummer on those things. But I, I just wanted to summarize what we're doing now. This is year one for math, and ELA has had their HQMI just a little bit longer. But prior to this year, the teachers spent a couple of years analyzing the standards and working on their curriculum maps and then having those maps approved by the board. Part of that was reviewing a wide variety of high-quality instructional materials, vetting them against the standards, and then selected the ones that they thought would best meet our needs. McGraw-Hill Study Sync is the resource that we're using for seventh and eighth grade ELA. The teachers really like that. Every math and ELA teacher has, has one of their professional goals this year, the purposeful use and integration of the resources that the board has purchased. And so we follow up with them. We look for those resources to be used and not be replaced by less quality resources in the classroom through walkthroughs. One thing that we like about the ELA resource is that it just has such a very diverse offering of texts for all different types of reading levels and all the different types of learners. There is something for everybody. If you have a diverse background, special education student, ELL student, they're going to be able to accommodate your instructional needs through that resource. And then the one for math is Envision. All of the math teachers are in full implementation of Envision. I see it when I do the walkthroughs. I can see it reflected in their notes. And one really nice thing about Envision is the layered resources that they have for all types of math learners. So if you're a math teacher, you can access notes for different levels of students and different leveled sheets that you can clip up and put together to build handouts, to build guided notes, and to build your assessments, which is very nice and convenient. What we like about Envision is that it moves, it transitions very well and very smoothly from teacher talk instruction to student talk application. That's what we like about that resource is the kids are talking to each other about the math and applying the math that they learn very quickly. Okay. One thing that I talked with Mrs. Bell and Mrs. Medina, the instructional coach, about are the shifts that we need to make to build critical thinking still, skills in our students. We have to get away from all teacher talk and transition more quickly into student talk and student thinking, working with the problems and applying what they, learning and know. And I think we're doing a nice job of that, and I see it reflected in our walkthroughs. Okay, five to seven minutes, Mrs. Mengers. Do you have any questions, board members?
I have a couple of questions.
Yeah.
Can you go back to the slide about? It was the historical behavior slide?
Yes.
Okay, so. The revoke privileges for this year is the highest it has been in the last ten years. What does that entail?
When a privilege, there are a few privileges that that is most likely referring to. One is probably student cell phones, and the other one is most likely iPads. So if we confiscate your device or if we prohibit you from bringing your phone to school, we commonly mark revoke privilege. If you can't do something that everyone else can do because of your behavior, it might be that. Now, that doesn't mean you don't get that privilege back, but at least at the time, it felt like that was the best consequence to mark.
Okay. And then on the state slide, I missed what the eighth grade rate was.
Seventy-seven percent.
Okay.
Seventy-seven point nine seven.
Cool.
Which is outstanding, yeah.
Seventy-eight percent. Okay, so then the last couple of years, when you have given this report, you've talked a lot about chronic absenteeism. Have you done any deep dive into any common characteristics of the students who grow up with chronic absenteeism?
Yeah. The research indicates what I and the counselors understand about chronic absenteeism. It tends to be related to a few core things. One, the habit has been built up over time. So chronic absenteeism doesn't usually start in just the seventh grade. I can look back and see through a kid's attendance history through the years, they've received multiple attendance letters. So it can become habitual. Some of it is parental emphasis. So we have somewhat of a remote work culture, and it is easy for some types of jobs to work at home a day or two, and sometimes we feel that kids can do that, too. We do have very flexible work policies, for example, and you can turn in your work. But missing instruction, like I said, is missing an opportunity. So just kind of perceptions about the importance of school is, is another one. And then I would say that there are some classic things, such as kids don't feel like they have meaningful connections to peers or to adults at the school. They're not connected to the school via an activity or a sport. And then the other one would be social conflict. That's always one that's mentioned in the research. If a kid experiences social conflict at school, they're much less likely to attend.
So when you, when you say research, are these our students that you have looked at for the characteristics? Or are you referencing research as in a different body of research?
What I can tell you is that for the forty-two students who are chronically absent today, I can easily run a report in Power School and have reviewed that with the counselors. I go to the team times and talk to the. I go to the team times and talk to the team, we contact the parents, we send them communication, and we try to get them here. And each one of those kids will have one or more of sort of those classical barriers to attendance. So, yeah, when I say research, you know, there just is a lot that I have access to through the internet that kind of gives me an idea of, you know, how to engage in conversations with kids based on those barriers. Another one is anxiety. I think that many of us have this sort of nominal notion that kids, some kids, some populations may not be as well as they once were for a variety of factors, including cellphone use and social media. And sometimes it's harder for them to get out of the house. And then, you know, once they build in that habit of not coming to school, it's hard to get them here.
I mean, I would be really curious to know, particularly with the larger amount that we had last year, how many of those students, you know, did any of them qualify for state? What were their GPAs? Did they have behavior referrals? And how many were they the recipients of behavior from students, those kinds of things? I would love to know what that overlap is, because, I mean, we can say, sure, students need to come to school, but there are also students who likely are chronically absent for many reasons, like you just mentioned, for anxiety, mental health reasons, they don't feel safe at school, around their peers, they lack the connections. But that doesn't necessarily mean that they aren't achieving the grades that they need and things like that. So I feel like maybe there's more, I would love to see what that data looks like, to see what that context is, and to see if maybe it's a symptom of something else that we could address and provide what they need to get them to come to school.
What I know is that while I can kind of very typically and predictably categorize the reasons that a particular student isn't here, each case is unique and different, and each family needs a specialized approach. There are likely some students who are chronically absent who do very well, but overall, they don't. And GPA is the worst way to measure it. The most illustrative statistic is when you take a look at their growth in math and reading from August through May.
I would love that data too. I think if we could do a deeper dive in those, all those cross tabs, it would give us a much different story. Thank you.
Okay.
All right, thank you, appreciate it. We'll move on to alternative delivery method, Tucker Pedicord. There probably is. I sure did, I'm sorry. Wouldn't be a board meeting if I didn't skip something. All right, Kansas Communities That Care Survey, Ms. Bell.
Are you talking to me?
Yeah. I had to first read it. It's very small.
Good evening. It is that time of year for me to give my annual report for the Communities That Care Survey. Our students are currently working on that as we speak for the next year, because we give it for, within the timeframe of enrollment, so they have until November 7th to finish that up. So it is appropriate to look at the results from last year. As always, this is very similar, just so that you all have the same reference from year to year. This is the participation level. The first row is the Shawnee High 2SD 450, and it compares to the participation in Shawnee County as well as the state of Kansas. So you can see, we're a little bit lower than we were last year in participation, but not because a parent opt out, it just was hard to catch some of those kids on the days that we give that survey. So therefore, we had a little bit lower dip, but overall, you can see we're far ahead as far as participation goes. We do a really good job. Our principals get that, collect that data, and work with their administrative assistants to get that information, and then they get staff members to give that survey, and that is the result of that. As always, I stripped down so you could just kind of see our current students. Remember, 12th grade is last year's 12th grader, so they're not here anymore. The class of 25, and I don't know if my little thing will work from this far, but you can see that the, under the 12th grade one, that blue one, it zigzags up and down, and then it kind of went back up again. But all of our alcohol use was only 12% or less of students that are self-reporting that they've experimented with alcohol. So that is very consistent with what has happened in the past. And as you can see, we continue to have a trend downwards in that use. And for many of these categories, we are below the state average. So this one is one of those where we are below the state in alcohol use reportage. So that was really good to see. Cigarettes was the next one, and you can see that we are like below 2%. And very few kids are reporting that they're using cigarettes, which is what you probably would expect these days. And the graph is almost nonexistent, like there's not a lot of reporting. This last year, those are all zeros, except for the green column there, the eighth grade, 10th grade, excuse me, the 10th grade. Everything else was zeros, or close to it. E-cigarettes, however, has replaced that cigarette use a little bit, but that has come down and just, and I always remind you every year, but we were up as high as over 32% of our students were reporting that. So we have significantly come down, and this grade band of students is now under 10%. So it's a significant improvement over the last seven years that I've been reporting this data to you. As you can see here, we are also below the state average in this important category that we're working on. And I just was in meetings with our teen topics teachers not too long ago, and they are developing, making sure to have a vaping section in their teen topics classes and use of drug use. So they will have that very prominent. They do already, but it will be even more so with the new curriculum maps that they are putting together in the teen topics class. Marijuana use is also still significantly lower than it has been for a while. You can kind of just see by the colors. And the overall graph, again, we were ticking up into the 22, 23, and then we are going back down again. So we're making significant progress there as well. And prescription drug use, also, one of my first years in reporting this data was significantly high, and that has also dropped off. Matter of fact, the 12th grade class did not report hardly any use of that, so. So it was much better. The last part of this survey really helps districts look at all of the questions. I give you some of the ones that we've spent a lot of time tracking, but it gives all of a climate environment, and it categorizes the different types of questions into different groups. And it will tell you if the data is, what we're wanting it to be higher or we're wanting it to be lower. And it breaks it down into those colors, so green across, I'm kind of going green, white, yellow, that ribbon there. The green is substantially better than the Kansas average. White is better than the Kansas average. Yellow is equal to the Kansas average. Orange is worse than the Kansas average, and red is substantially. And so we're looking first and foremost for any reds across this, and you don't see any. And you don't see any on the next page either, so that's really good news. This data, you'll see on the, on the bottom right there, there's a trend. So the arrow means that there's really no significant changes. X, you'll see that there's a trend going in the wrong direction. And I think it's a check, yes, for a positive trend. So we're pretty stagnant on areas, and the ones that we kind of have a bad trend in kind of been that way for a while. So you'll see, this is the other one. So the first one, just to kind of go through, this are risk factors, and we want a lower percentage is most desirable. So they're looking at depression, anxiety, like Mr. Yurk was talking about. The next one, we're wanting a higher percentage, and that's where students are feeling empowered with their voice. They feel engaged, and they have a self of student, a sense of student agency. And then questions that really lead us to, are they really empowering relationships between teacher and students? Are we working on that? And then empowering relationships with parents and students. So what we're going to be, I'm kind of excited. Mrs. Hummer and I were asked to start working directly with our counselors in like a K-12 environment. So we'll be getting all of our counselors together, and our first meeting will be next Monday. And one of our very first topics is, they will all look at their building data very specifically, and we'll have conversations about that and what they're seeing in their buildings and how we can address some of those issues. So we'll be excited to get to work one-on-one with the counselors and use this data. Dr. O'Brien also shares this data with social workers and whatnot, so that, that they also are very well aware of the progress that we're making in areas we can still be improving on. So with that, I'll take any questions that you might have.
Board members, any questions?
So the work that you all will do with the counselors, the students that have that work will not be surveyed again for two years.
Yes, so they get surveyed as a sixth grader, and then as an eighth grader, and then a 10th grader, and then a 12th grader. So that's why these graphs keep track of the progression. So you'll see the
Of each of their grade levels.
Yes. So the class of 25 is a blue line with a blue dot. So you're looking for any of those blue lines with blue dots. So with sixth graders, for example, in prescription drug use, they reported less than 2.5% of them were, were using prescription drugs, misusing them. And then in the eighth grade, that same class of students was at a little over 4.5%. But then they dropped down to less than 1% as 10th graders, and they reported 0% use as 12th graders.
So the counselors will work with students at all levels, not just the ones that took the survey?
Correct. Yeah, so it, it gives us a sense of where we need to focus our time and what kinds of things. They dive in also to the Communities That Care data itself on the website, and then they look for most common drug use and then tailor their lessons that you approved on their curriculum maps to make sure we're addressing things like vaping or fentanyl use or things that might show up on those surveys.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, now we're going to move on to the alternative, alternative delivery method, Tucker Pedicord.
All right. Good evening. This is, if you're not familiar with this process, what we're doing right now is we are preparing for the possibility that a bond might pass and just doing all the work and crossing all the Ts and D and Is ahead of that time. The statute that governs construction expenditures on school projects is 1151, 721151, and that's, that standard statute is basically design it, put it out to bid, hard, it's called design, bid, build. When you want to do something separate, we have to do what's called alternative delivery. That's 721154, which is what we're doing here today. The first step in executing what is alternative delivery method is you all have to have a public comment session, which is what we're doing tonight. So anybody else who wants to comment on this, they can afterwards. And then you also, as a board, need a burden of proof, so it needs to be advertised in the paper, which we've done that. And so the burden of proof is really about, there's five sections, and they all really relate to cost and schedule and emergencies. So one is basically just saying that, that the alternative delivery method is going to provide you an advantage from a time or cost standpoint. And then it goes down through the list of things that are really basically benefits of time or cost. Number two is the ability to overlap design and construction phases required to meet the needs of the client. Well, we're a school, right? And so we're going to have to do things earlier, ahead of time, to start getting things bought in order to start getting work done over the summer because of lead times and phasing. Number three is alternative delivery schedule is needed because of emergencies. You may not have one today, but if we lock ourselves into a design, bid, build environment where we have no flexibility and you do have an emergency, it's much harder to respond to that. As far as significant phasing and technical complexities, I think it's a given that we're going to have challenges with that, and that's one of the things you work through with the CMARs. And then the fifth one is use of the method will not encourage favoritism or diminish competition. The next set of steps that we go through is what's called the state process for onboarding a CMAR, and there are guardrails around that in order to encourage competition and decrease favoritism. Also, what we bring to the table is ensuring that there's even enhanced competition and even less favoritism. So it's a very objective process that we'll go through. But right now, you're at step one tonight, which is just the public hearing and decision to use alternative delivery method. Are there any questions?
All right, thank you, appreciate it. We're going to move on to comments and concerns from patrons. We do have one.
So I just wanted to come and give you guys a tennis update. I had 29 girls out, and I did a little bit of research from your books. It looks like the biggest tennis team we've had in three decades. I could be wrong, that's what I saw in your books. Eleven of those 29 were returners from last year's team. Eighteen were brand-new girls to tennis, 12 of those were freshmen. The girls had a good season. We got pretty bad pairing at regionals, but they had fun, they learned a lot. Out of the 30 on the team that's with a, one of the boys coming and being the manager, 25 of them will earn their letters on Wednesday night. Out of all of them, one freshman girl ended her singles playing undefeated this season. I want to say she ended it with 8-0, but she stayed with her doubles partner to go into conference and regionals and stuff like that. As of right now, I think that I have everybody returning next year because they really enjoyed it. So any questions from you guys?
I saw, I saw the news story, I think you, of 13 news possibly, or that you're on there. So I thought you represented the program well, so good job.
Yeah, thank you, those are great numbers, that's exciting.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Oh, yes, hold on, one second.
I just want to say congratulations. As Rocky said, it was a great story. I shared that story and love telling people about you. I think that what you did with the team this year was amazing, and you could just tell that the girls and their parents just truly enjoyed you being their coach, and what an inspiration you, you were to them, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to business by consent. Need a motion? Motion by Erica.
Second.
Second by Sarah, all in favor? Seven, zero. All right, we'll move on to approve alternative delivery method, Ms. Meggers.
As Tucker just explained, by statute, we're required to add alternative delivery method to a board agenda and then allow for public comment. Once that requirement's met, we can proceed with publishing a notice in the district paper 15 days prior to putting out a request for qualifications. If this is approved tonight, we'll put that notice in the paper and on the required website as soon as possible, and then that 15 days happens to land right on November 5th. So if we pass, we are ready to roll after that with moving forward. So we would recommend approval.
All right, we need a motion to approve the alternative delivery method. Motion by Christina.
Second.
Second by Sarah, all in favor? Seven, zero. All right, thank you. All right, we'll move on to appoint KASB annual delegate, Ms. Meggers. All right, we'll move on to appoint KASB annual delegate. Ms. Mengers.
We need to appoint a delegate and an alternate delegate for the 2025 Delegate Assembly, which is held on Saturday, November 15th during the KASB Annual Convention in Wichita. Each KASB member district has one vote, and we will delegate a participant who can be in person or virtual to vote. As representatives of our district, the delegate will vote to elect the KASB president-elect and to help set the 2026 legislative positions and priorities for KASB. So we just need to determine a delegate and an alternate delegate. Currently, Erica and Sarah are signed up for the KASB conference, if you want somebody that's in person.
No, I'm kidding. I'll be the delegate.
I move we nominate or delegate a delegate and an alternate delegate of Erica and Sarah.
Motion by Lauren. Second by Rosa. All in favor? Seven-zero. Thank you for your faith, everyone. All right, we're going to move on to discussion items. Superintendent's report. Ms. Mengers.
Okay, we are going to start with a positive. Just this last week, we received the Kansas Can Star Recognition Program notification from KSDE, and we received stars in three areas. Those areas are academically prepared for post-secondary success. That means that these students, and this is all based off of 24-25 data. So that means that we had a high percent of students that scored a three or four in our state assessments last year. And it's a combined, all grade levels that took state assessments, math, ELA, and science. So it's a combined percent. And in that level, we, or in that area, we received a copper award. And then graduation, that is similar. It means we had a certain percent of students that graduated. I believe we were 92, around 92%, and that earned us a bronze award. And then in post-secondary effectiveness, which means that students go on to earn an industry certificate, they earn a two-year degree, or two years out, they're still attending college, or they could serve in the military. If they've done any of those, it counts towards that, and in that area, we earned a copper award. So the last, just to give you a little perspective, the last few years, we have earned three stars. The la- this will be the third consecutive year that we've earned stars in three different areas. Prior to that, we earned two, 2020 and 20, or yeah, 2020, 21, and 21, 22. So coming out of COVID, they were a little bit rougher. We only earned two stars. So we are seeing some nice results and seeing some growth there. So just wanted to share that. Two other things. T-Bird Talks. We have our first T-Bird Talks next Tuesday. And that topic, this, we got the topic from Surveying Parents in our first district newsletter. The topic that rose to the top that people wanted to learn more about was school safety. So we will have all, four of our SROs will be present and sharing some information. We met with them today. And I think they're excited to share some of the things that we have in place and just it's meant to inform parents and give them a chance to ask questions. And then we are two weeks and one day from bond election. So it's coming quickly. We have one more town hall meeting next Monday, October 27th, at Shawnee Heights Elementary. We also have a little over 7,000 mailers will hit mailboxes this week. So they're supposed to be there by the 22nd. We never quite know when they're paper mail, but they should be there sometime this week. And they are going out to households that have registered voters. So that's just another way of communicating. And then you can always send people to the website, but we were talking today, and the biggest way to get information out, we have reached families and parents that we have contacts for word of mouth. So if you are a parent in the district, if you're on the board, if you live in the community and are familiar with the bond, the best way we can share information and get facts out is just through word of mouth. So just wanted to remind everybody that, but we do have information on the website and one more town hall meeting. So if you have questions, I'm happy to answer them.
All right, thank you. We're going to move on to legislative positions document. Ms. Mengers.
We just have this as a discussion item. See if you have any questions, and then we can approve it next, the next meeting. You'll notice the front page looks exactly like it did last year. We talked, all five districts in Shawnee County, and we felt like the five positions listed continue to be important and worthy of ongoing discussion with elected officials in the upcoming legislative season. These include using taxpayers for education for public schools, teacher recruitment and retention remains a top priority, fully funding special education services. Those expenses continue to increase. The current funding formula sunsets in 2027, so renewing that and keeping things like waitings and a yearly increase in there so we can plan for students and staffing needs. And then restoring flexibility and local control in serving our at-risk students. We do receive at-risk funds. They have become more and more restricted, and sometimes it's a challenge to use them for what we really need them for. And so just allowing local control and some flexibility within that. So those are the same five priorities we had last, last year. The only thing that has changed, if you flip it to the back, they have, we've updated school board presidents. Otherwise, it should look familiar. Any questions or concerns on this?
I'm just curious if anything about redistricting or with, I think that's what it's called, with any of our areas ever came up as a topic?
Like between school districts?
Yeah, between districts and our legislators, I guess.
Oh, the voting. It did not come up for the, this piece.
Okay, I was just curious. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to questions and comments from board members of education. Board of Education members.
So one of my goals, being on the board, has been about the reading scores and literacy. And in doing, just a little looking around, there's some research that shows that cursive handwriting stimulates different parts of the brain and that it actually increases reading scores. So I just want to put it out there to maybe everyone take a look at that and see if that's something that we at Shawnee Heights might want to try to implement, maybe even on a trial basis in certain classes or whatever. I know some teachers, I think, I've heard that some people do cursive, but it's not across the board in the district. So and then there's research, some say it confuses the kids if you do it too early, but then it helps them later on. So with anything with research, you could get differing opinions and research results. So cursive is just something that I would personally like to see come back. I think it was taken out in 2010, from what I could read. That's when schools kind of kicked it to the curb or whatever, and I'd just maybe like to see if it could come back and see if there would be any improvement in reading skills with our students. Thank you. Oh, yes.
May I talk about that? Just provide some insight. We do formally teach cursive writing. It is part of our third-grade curricular standards that we have. And you all approved ELA maps with that cursive handwriting in it, so it never went away for our district. We have had cursive, and we continue to have that. It is focused on at that third-grade level. And we use Wilson cursive writing, and that's the program that we use in order to teach that. But prior to that, all of our grade levels, starting as early as pre-K, are working on manuscript and, you know, handwriting skills all along the way, and then we add that cursive in third grade.
Is there any option to add it in second grade? Because it seems like our scores have struggles during that second-grade testing, and I know there's discussion about changing the testing.
There's always options to add it, but I will say, in many of the handwriting programs, it is most appropriate at third grade. That's where the cursive starts as far as the programming that they, and the resources that they provide to schools.
Okay.
So I can definitely look into it. Handwriting is something that we always want to focus on because you are exactly correct with the stronger you are in the ability to write, even forming letters, there's strong correlation with you being successful, a reader, and being more literate.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we prioritize it. I was at a restaurant, I don't know, I'm guessing, in the past six months, and there were young adults who could not read what the waitress had written on their receipt because it was in cursive, and they're like, what do you think this says? And it's like, I want to make sure that, I'm just trying to come up with ideas to improve the reading abilities of the students, if there's anything out there that we can find to try to help them.
And no, it is something with so much focus on the science of reading and letters. I'm in letters myself. Handwriting is a big part of that, and so our teachers are continuing to learn the importance of that, and we continue to get great resources in order to help them, help our students.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Absolutely.
All right, Rosa, did you have a question or a comment?
Just a couple of comments. One, I just wanted to say, I thought the fire safety with the fire trucks and all the students that participated in that, and then the winters going on, the field trips on the fire trucks to get to school was just great. I love that the elementary schools still do that. And a big shout out to the band for their craft show on Saturday. It was so great to see everyone out there and performing and just being a part of it. And it was, just felt very homey again. And so, you know, me and a good craft fair, it's something I always look forward to. So I did a lot of Christmas shopping, but just, just a great turnout and so much fun to see a lot of talented people in our district, and especially kudos to those younger students. I know there were some students from Tecumseh South that were there, and Tecumseh North that were sharing their talents and had bracelets and 3D things for sale. And I just find that so inspirational that they're just looking to be entrepreneurs at such a really young age. And then a big kudos to Tiffany and the Shawnee Heights Foundation for the wonderful breakfast that they put together. The choir did a great job, and orchestra did a great job. And it was really nice to see a lot of those grants that the foundation awarded. And just a reminder that, you know, it was about $15,000 worth of grants that went out to our teachers. And just a big thank you to the foundation for supporting our teachers.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Can I ask just one more question? Becky, can I ask you a question? So I had a middle school teacher that lives in my area say, I wish we could get back to doing cursive. Have we been doing it all along? And this was within the past two years, maybe, that that comment was made?
I can only answer for the last three that I've been here. But as a building administrator, I know that handwriting was really part of my experience.
Okay.
Okay.
When I was an instructional coach and Mrs. Greer was here, there was a time when they were not, they stopped teaching cursive writing specifically, and then some teachers chose to do it anyway. So we've had continual groups of kids have cursive writing, but it wasn't required. When Mrs. Hummer got back on here, and as Mrs. Gibler was leaving, that was something they were investigating and getting added back. So we've had it for the last three or four years now. But there was a brief time where we weren't teaching cursive writing in the district.
Thank you for the clarification.
I will echo Rosa's comments. I was, about the foundation breakfast and the student performers in particular, I had a guest at my table that is from outside of our district, and they were so impressed with both the orchestra and the choir and commented to me that they just thought that was so wonderful. And getting to see the presentations by our teachers that had received funds from the foundation as well, they thought that that was just really a nice way for people that were guests of the district and people that maybe aren't regularly involved to see the power of our foundation. So great job on that. That was really meaningful to people that aren't here, weekend and week out, to get to see a little bit about what our district does and how we support each other. And then the only other thing I wanted to say was just congratulations to Mr. Spade and Ms. Nelson on their Teachers of the Year. So that was really exciting. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to come and see them in person, but I've caught Mr. Spade already to congratulate him personally. So just an exciting acknowledgement for the district.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to an executive session. I move that we go into executive session to discuss an individual employee, individual employee's performance pursuant to the exception for non-elected personnel under coma. We will return to regular session at, you said 10 minutes? Eight-ten. Motion by Erica. Second by Kristi. All in favor? Seven-zero. Rosa, you're coming with. Okay. I move that we adjourn. Second. Sec- for, motion by Erica, second by Christie, all in favor? Seven zero. Thank you.